Good evening and welcome to the February 4th, 2020, regular City Commission meeting for the city of Ormond Beach. We are in our commission chambers and I hope you felt welcome tonight by Planning Director Stephen Spraker and IT Director Ned Huta. They were our greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you to my right and your left. Recording Secretary Cassidy Ritz, City Clerk Colby Solinto, City Commissioner from Zone One Dwight Selby, our Deputy Mayor and Zone Two Commissioner Troy Kent, to my left and your right, Commissioner from Zone Three Susan Persis, Zone Four Commissioner Rob Littleton, our City Manager Joyce Shanahan, our Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, please silence your cellphones at this time and rise for the invocation given by Deacon Maylene Stowe from the Church of the Holy Child. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of serving you, both as citizens and leaders in this beautiful paradise we get to call home. Help us always to remember that we are but stewards of that which is yours. We pray that you will send down upon those who hold office in our city of Ormond Beach the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all your people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we will recognize Chief, our Fire Chief, Chief Severs, for introduction of new firefighters.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be able to introduce two new firefighters at the city of Ormond Beach. They both completed all their in-house orientation and are actually out there on the road today, so if you see them, please say hello. I will start with Denton Sawyer to my far left first. Denton was born in Vero Beach and grew up in Green Turtle Cay, Abaco Bahamas. He attended high school at Forest Heights Academy located in Marsh Harbor, Abaco Bahamas. He completed his fire academy, though, and his emergency medical technician training right here at Daytona State College. He started his career with the, in the fire service with the city of Daytona Beach. A little experience and we're glad to get him with that, kind of stole him. Currently lives in Daytona Beach but is looking to purchase a home right here in Ormond Beach. His hobbies include freediving at many of the springs in Florida and he does play the guitar. Don't throw that into us to embarrass him. He would like the commission to know that the city of Ormond Beach was always his number one place to work. He hopes to end his career as a firefighter with the Ormond Beach Fire Rescue Department and we're very happy to have you and welcome Denton. And Kristi Brown, I'd like to introduce her. She was born in Norfolk, Virginia and grew up in Chesapeake, Virginia. She attended Hickory High School in Chesapeake, Virginia, and Kristi also attended the fire academy and EMT school right here in Daytona State College. She currently lives in Port Orange and her hobbies include adventures with her two hound dogs and working out and traveling. She was also a Division Two collegiate soccer player. Congratulations on that. She would also like the commission to know that she is a certified as a state of Florida law enforcement officer. She worked previously for Daytona Beach Shores. Again, we got to steal a really qualified candidate. Kristi earned her bachelor degree in science and physical education, a master's of science degree in kinesiology, and is certified as an ACSM, not sure what that means, personal trainer. I don't know what the association that is, but it's wonderful to have you here and it's my pleasure to welcome them and to introduce you to the City Commission. Congratulations.
Sure. Stand up, sure.
Our, our presentation is going to be in three parts, so I'll go first and the other two will follow. We represent the Ormond Beach Tree Committee, a non-political grassroots group formed to preserve and protect trees and plants in our community. Members are citizens distressed by the unnecessary clear-cutting for development that motivates the ongoing bulldozing and destruction of our urban forests, trees, wetlands around our beautiful city. We know from current research on resiliency that trees and wetlands are vitally important to offset flooding and ensure a healthy environment. As concerned citizens, we embrace the unique nature of our city but are increasingly troubled by the widespread removal of native trees and plants, as well as the changing character brought on by strip malls, national chains, and additional traffic on our already overburdened streets. Our group began then with discussions of trees and plants and what we could do to help and maintain the beauty and character of our city. We all wanted to see a greater ratio of native and non-native plantings, increased use of water-wise, hardier landscaping, and preservation of old growth trees and wetlands on city property and whenever possible in new developments. These guidelines are characteristic of many Ormond Beach communities that were established prior to 2009. For example, the Trails, Timber Creek, earlier phases of breakaway trails, Northbrook, the villages, where development pres- preserved, excuse me, mature trees and, and much existing natural habitat. In contrast, newer developments often clear land by the acre, cutting established trees and installing retention ponds in the process. As we considered the various issues, we all wondered how, given the recent destruction of the trees, Ormond Beach could retain its title as a tree city. That question led to investigation of the Tree City USA standards as, as defined by the Arbor Day Foundation. Of the four standards defined for tree status, Status One, Standard One states the requirement for a tree board or department. We were told the Quality of Life Advisory Board serves as a tree board for Ormond Beach. However, after attending meetings and reviewing minutes back to 2014, we discovered three issues were mentioned only three times in a five-year period. Part Two.
Part Two is Georgia Ann Meadows.
Hi, Georgia Ann Meadows. I live at 817 Lindenwood Circle. It is our belief that a dedicated tree board could address many of our concerns, as well as build a bridge between citizens and the commission. We are presenting a draft resolution we wrote as a result of our discussions and research that provides a framework we think the city of Ormond Beach should adopt. We believe it supports our argument for a dedicated tree board. Once this draft resolution was written, we approached our zone commissioners and city staff to discuss its adoption, or at least to begin a dialogue about supporting something similar. We outlined steps to achieve our goal of understanding the current status of city efforts to preserve and protect our trees. We met with Commissioners, City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Planning Division Director Stephen Spraker, City Landscape Architect Kara Culliver, and other staff members. All were professional, gracious, and open to our questions. Upon recommendation by city staff, we attended meetings of the Site Plan Review Committee. Again, we were welcomed and invited to participate. We also researched native, native plants and trees and attended workshops on resiliency and other environmental issues. After much reflection, we continue to believe our city does not meet the intent of Standard One of the Tree City USA Award as follows. Standard One states someone must legally, be legally responsible for the care of all trees on city or town-owned property. By delegating tree care decisions to professional forester, arborist, city department, citizen-led tree board, or some combination, city leaders determine who will perform necessary tree work. The public will also know who is accountable for decisions that impact community trees. Often both professional staff and an advisory tree board are established, which is a good goal for most communities. The formation of a tree board often stems from a group of citizens. In some cases, a mayor or city officials have started the process. Either way, the benefits are immense. Involving residents and business owners creates wide awareness of what trees do for the community and provides broad support for better tree care. Thank you.
Thank you. And part Three is Pam Novy.
Thank you. Pam Novy, 26 Carriage Creek Way. To support our proposal for a dedicated tree board, we have obtained endorsements from Halifax River Audubon, the Florida Native Plant Society Paw Paw Chapter, the Environmental Council of Volusia in Flagler Counties Incorporated, and the Volusia Flagler Sierra Club. We have also collected Ormond Beach residents' signatures on a citizen petition asking for a dedicated tree board. These endorsements and signatures were given to the city clerk. To reiterate, number one, a tree board would bridge, would build a bridge between concerned citizens and the commission. Number two, a tree board would assist the city in meeting the intent of the Tree City USA Award standards. Number three, a tree board can assist with education and outreach about the importance and value of healthy trees and work with city staff on Arbor Day celebrations. Four, a tree board would add an avenue for citizens and certified professionals to help shape the environmental efficacy of our city environmental plan. Five, a tree board would make suggestions to the city regarding updates to tree preservation language in the land development codes. And six, establishment of a tree board would reinforce trust and fulfill a promise to include citizens in the decision-making progress, process. In our packet, again given to the city clerk, in our packet you will find our presentation, the resolution we propose, the endorsements mentioned, an article written and published by Tree City USA entitled "Best Is What Works Best," which we also gave each of you a copy of. We respectfully ask you to consider our request to appoint a functioning and dedicated tree board as outlined in the presented draft resolution. And again, it's a resolution and it's a draft and we would be glad to work with you on it. We hope it will lead to increased citizen involvement and enhance trust. We also thank you and are appreciative of your service and the time you dedicate to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Lieutenant, and Commissioners. My name is Sang Robertson. I live at 19 Orchard Lane across the bridge. I'm here tonight to represent the Garden Club of the Halifax Country concerning our proposed public-private project, that of turning Vedner Park on beachside into an all-native plant park. We believe now is the time to bring back the ecological balance necessary for our natural world here in Ormond. There would be no insecticides, no chemicals, just plants that belong here, which will bring insects that belong here, and the birds that belong here as well. We're very excited about the prospect of working with the city on this project for the betterment of Ormond Beach and our entire area. This project is enthusiastically endorsed by the principal at Osceola School, which is but a few steps from the park. Mrs. Bird's third-grade class there also likes the idea of Vedner Park as an outdoor nature classroom. For them, they like it so much that they have written letters and drawn pictures to convince you that they want it. And I've given those to Colby and she'll get the pictures to you all. We request tonight that you consider directing city staff to research the possibility and feasibility of working with our garden club in funding this park for the education and enjoyment of our children, our adults, and our visitors. And I would just like to end by saying it is so nice for me to be here to talk about something positive instead of coming to fuck at you.
Rick Bohm, 5 Springwood Trail. I'm here to thank you. Last week, for the second time in the history of the Daytona Racing and Recreation Facilities District, the city of Ormond Beach received a grant that will allow, with the funding that you approved previously, to match that grant, the building of a gymnasium at the South Ormond Community Center. This is the first time in over 30 years that that's been done, and it couldn't have been done without Joyce and Kelly having found the funding for the match to begin with, for Robert and his staff having put together the presentation that they presented to the grant people, without you having approved this at your commission meeting in December that approved the grant. So, all the way around, it was a group effort and a collaborative effort. I should also mention Sean because he had input into the design that was put together in a hurry by Dwight Durant and Dana Smith with Sean's input that had to go with the grant application to get that grant approved. So, all the way around, I'm here to say good things to you. I really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to this gym getting built. There are going to be a lot of citizens of Ormond Beach that are going to really be thrilled to be able to use this new gym and this new facility when it's built. And I thank you again. Thank you.
Lori Tallin, 5 Broad River Road, Ormond Beach. Hello, I'm here tonight to ask you to consider the public-private partnership in creating an all-native plant park at the neighborhood Vedner Park. Vedner Park is an underused corner parcel, city property located on natural dunes, south of Hillside Cemetery, and in close proximity of Osceola School and down the street from the Ormond Beach Art Museum and Gardens. In its present state, the established irrigation keeps a random array of vegetation alive that does not necessarily support native wildlife, bees, pollinators. It is the hope of the Garden Club of Halifax Country to form a partnership and help the city convert Vedner Park into a sustainable park that can be touted as a gem and example to neighboring cities. Going native is highly desirable by the Garden Club of America and nationwide environmental organizations. It is sustainable, provides a healthy habitat for our wildlife and birds, and native parks were also recommended by the updated Main Street Plan when we're creating our green spaces. The park can be envisioned as a potential open classroom for school-aged children learning about the environment, or a place simply to be still and appreciate the beauty of old Florida. Please consider helping us create this gem within our city. And as a side note, but second, but definitely not second, I want to just let each and every one of you know how appreciative I am of the work that you do, the time you spend with individuals in the city gathering information and making intelligent decisions. So, I appreciate all the good work and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Denny, 1027 North Halifax, and I wanted to start out, have a couple of topics. I say I had a very interesting and enjoyable afternoon yesterday with Monday with the mayor. So, we had a lot of good discussions and actually met the, a candidate for District Four for Volusia County, unexpected information. So, I enjoyed that. I know Commissioner Kent has coffee with Kent, with Kent. And the City Manager Shanahan has walking with the City Manager usually once a month. I really enjoy, got to see the water plant last month. Plus, Chief Godfrey has coffee with a cop. That's all an opportunity for citizens to have face-to-face conversations, which I think increases our understanding and our trust. So, two-way conversation back and forth. So, I would encourage the other Commissioners to look for opportunities to establish a similar forum. My second topic is civil discourse. Last month, we had our meeting on the last Monday of the month. The theme was what do the citizens of Ormond Beach want for our community in the coming year? So, I want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Persis from attending and again, City Manager Shanahan from attending. So, it really allowed our citizens to speak of what they thought and have somebody listen. And I really had that impression that both of y'all were listening and maybe even taking notes. So, it, half of civil discourse is active listening, taking the opportunity to listen to the other side of what people have to say, not just worry about your position and how you're going to talk to it. So, we do think you added a great deal to the event. My last topic, switching hats, is Citizens for Ormond Beach. And it's, we'll have, kick off our 2020 speaker series next Monday, was that February the 12th at 5:30 at the library. We have two speakers. First speaker is going to be Mr. Pringle, who is the Chair for the Neighborhood Improvement Advisory Board. And he's going to talk about HUD, Community Development Block Grants, and all the rules that go along with it and the procedures and timelines to allow citizens to be able to offer their suggestions of what we should do and how we could use some of this grant money to improve their neighborhood versus just people complaining about nothing ever happened. So, I think that was important. The second part is we'll have Billy Wheeler, which is the District Two Volusia County Representative, but she's going to speak as the co-chair for the Complete Count Committee for the 2020 Census. So, she's going to-
Thank you, Bill. Yep, Billy Wheeler's doing that for the county and the census, getting an accurate count is a huge deal. Historically in Ormond, we have gotten very accurate counts, so we're on, I know staff is on top of that. But still, an interesting topic and hopefully folks will come out and join you. Next is Dr. Rick Lenz.
Good evening, I'm Rick Lenz, 570 John Anderson Drive as the last 18 months moving out of Daytona and loving Ormond. And I just here to enjoy this meeting, but to share with you some exciting news. The museum on Granada and Halifax in conjunction with St. James Episcopal Church is having a incredible couple of months bringing these incredible icons in transformation. They're as big as the wall and as small as your screen, and they're magnificent artworks that are exhibited, contemporary art by a Russian-born artist, Ummila Palaska. I didn't get that right, but it's as close as I can get. But it's going to be here for a couple of months and it's going to be just beautiful. I want everyone to know about it so you can come and enjoy it. It'll be open, there's going to be musical presentations, groups playing, and you can have a tour of the artwork. It's not all about religion, it's about beautiful art, and it's about a beautiful gift to the city of Ormond Beach. And I was asked to invite the City Commission to come to the gala. I've given everyone except Commissioner Kent a brochure. And I just, I want to tell you another thing. This is, this is exciting. I've not been in this building before and it is really moving to see how beautiful this city is actually and how wonderful you Commissioners are. And I got one other favor because I've asked a couple of y'all about this. I live on John Anderson and I tell you what, it's gorgeous, but it's dangerous road. And I saw a lady walking down the street pushing a stroller with a little baby in it, in the grass, and obviously that wasn't working, so she got out in the street. There are sidewalks on the area, but we, really, if you want to start thinking about the safety of the community, there needs to be a sidewalk down this street. And how it cannot have been done already is beyond my comprehension, but it's not, I have a sidewalk in front of my house, but I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about the people. And the other thing, I would like to ask the police chief to put up a cop with a radar on it at least once or twice a day because they're going along at 45, 50 miles an hour and it, and you can see where they've gone through the grass because they go off the road. So, I'm throwing out too many things, but please come join us, the celebration, because it is going to be a great gift to Ormond. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Doctor. And last but not least is normally our fluoride speaker, but tonight it's Jim Schultz on
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. I don't have any icons to offer you. I'd love to. I'd speak about a novel coronavirus. It has unusually high latency, which means that you can be exposed and it takes a long time before you have any symptoms, which makes it a lot scarier as far as transmission goes because you have no clue. And maybe 10 days later, all of a sudden, you realize you have been sharing it with everybody you've met. And China, that's a lot of people. Wuhan is 11 million. They just had an event where a lot of the transient workers went home, 5 million of them, for a little visit. Not great timing. But what I wanted to talk about was also is that most of the coronaviruses, this is a novel one, it's not the typical, and so they don't know how it's going to respond, are very adversely affected by higher levels of vitamin D. 30 nanograms per milliliter, which is just a little bit above insufficient one point, is usually effective at preventing it. China has very low levels of vitamin D overall. Wanted to mention, right now, we have an issue where Google has announced that they're going to only show World Health Organization official positions on their number-one placement. And they've been doing that for a while as far as for vaccine information, other than official information. And sometimes official information isn't as correct as it should be. I just watched a meeting with World Health Organization experts, the very top, they thought it was a closed meeting. They were saying totally different things than what they have in public. There were concerns about the adjectives like the aluminum in the shots and how dangerous and risky it was, but there was no other choice. And the head of the program, I heard her four days later talking about how robust their tracking system for vaccine injuries was. At the meeting, she said the opposite, that it was inadequate and she felt they needed a better tracking system. So, what do you listen to, the official position or the honest position? You've got no choice if you only hear one of them, and that's really what the point is. Go back and look at 60 Minutes, 1976 Swine Flu Outbreak, Mike Wallace. You'll see- You'll see the truth isn't always there.
Thank you, Jim. Move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes have been sent to the Commission for Review and posted to the city's website. Any, these are the January 21st, 2020, regular City Commission meetings. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Move approval of the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign, and we will show the minutes approved unanimously. And that brings us to item seven, the consent agenda. The action proposed is stated for each item on the consent agenda. Unless any commissioner removes an item, no discussion on individual items will occur and a single motion will approve all items. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Move for approval, move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wishes to comment on a consent agenda item. Seeing none, we will move to public hearings. Item 8A, I'll open the public hearings and ask the city clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 2020-01, an ordinance amending paragraph C, Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 3.11 acres located at 263 South Nova Road, Volusia County Parcel Number 4221-00-02-0101, from B8 Commercial to PBD Plan Business Development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-01, read by title only.
Thank you. And this is the second reading. I do not have any cards except from the attorney representing the applicant. If anybody has any questions, otherwise we can have a motion in a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-01.
Second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And that brings us to 8B.
Ordinance number 2020-02, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be known as Nova Road Climate Controlled Storage, authorizing the construction of a three-story climate-controlled storage facility consisting of approximately 94,921 square feet with 780 storage units, together with associated site improvements to be located at 263 South Nova Road, Volusia County Parcel Number 4221-00-02-0101, authorizing a building height of 32.33 feet for the primary roof-bearing wall and 42 feet for the parapet walls and cornice, authorizing the use of the Institute of Traffic Engineers ITE parking generation requirements, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, providing for recreation, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-02, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. Again, this is a second reading. Other than the representative of the applicant being available for any questions, I don't have any cards. A and B are somewhat related. A, of course, was the zoning and B is the, B is the PBD. If there's no questions, I don't have any other cards. Just need a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2020-02.
I'll second the motion.
Great. Any discussion? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Selby, seconded by Commissioner Littleton. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings. Move to 9A, a staff action item on the East Central Florida Regional Resiliency Collaborative. And at this time, I would ask our Planning Director, Stevens Breaker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. At the last commission meeting, there was a presentation from the East Coast, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council regarding the action plan and the memorandum of understanding. What we're trying to get from the commission, if this is an action plan, a memorandum of understanding that you're interested in, the action plan really seeks to increase the ability of local and regional stakeholders to implement resiliency and climate adaptation strategies across disciplines. So it's really a multi-discipline approach to resiliency. And the memorandum of understanding lays out basically what's expected of each jurisdiction. We believe it would be wise to be part of overall collaborative, kind of like the Transportation Planning Organization where you're part of a larger group to try to address these. A lot of these issues are being addressed now through our floodplain ordinances, through our master stormwater plan, which is also incorporating sea level rise. Our regulations today have where you can and can't build regulations, but it would be nice to kind of put it all together through an action plan.
I have a couple of questions, but does anybody else have questions for Stevens?
I have one. Steven, is this organization going to give out any funding or grants?
They, I believe they have in the past, and I believe the Department of Economic Opportunity also partners. So participating with a regional collaborative, in our opinion, would increase the odds of being able to get funding for a city action plan specific to Ormond Beach that would be a cog in the overall regional resiliency plan. So I believe it would aid efforts to obtain grant funding.
Good deal. Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, can you explain the annual summit, what that would entail?
It's basically a participation of city staff in their, in their activities for the annual summit. I would imagine they would review some of the recommendations that they have of their action plan, kind of to assess where they've, where they've been and where they're seeking to go. So basically, staff participation would be part of that, that annual summit.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Steven, this grew out of the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council?
Correct.
The ECFRPC. And so this is the ECFRRC. And for years, nobody has understood really what they do. I mean, people send representatives to them. Can you explain it in an easily understandable way? So my understanding is there's no budget impact. This resiliency is the wave of the future. The governor just appointed, appointed a statewide resiliency director. And my guess is, if we're not on board with this, we ultimately probably end up losing funding opportunities and it's something that we need to be a part of. But can you explain it?
Sure.
I know you already did, but make it simple.
The Regional Planning Council, one of the basic things they did for a number of years was they evaluated development of regional impacts. So they evaluated large projects that had multi-jurisdictional impacts. And they would review it, provide input, usually along with other state agencies. So they were kind of the regional collaborative of planning. Recently, they've gotten to larger issues such as sea level rise and resiliency. So again, they're kind of a master planning organizations trying to help jurisdictions and counties through some of the larger planning issues that the state is facing.
Okay. So we'd get best practices?
Correct. And again, I mean, eventually, I think the city would, would seek to get their own action plan, which has been done in some other jurisdictions. If you go to their website, they'll list them. So this would help us to get grant funding specifically for Ormond Beach and basically to help our stormwater master plan and our floodplain regulations to, to implement sea level rise and resiliency plans.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Selby?
Steven, are we obligating ourselves to do anything? I mean, obviously, I guess what I'm asking is, do we, do we give up any control over our planning process and so forth by joining this collaborative?
So we asked that exact same question to their staff. And basically, these are recommendations that are based on best practices. And the individual jurisdictions can implement what they feel is appropriate. So I think the action of the commission would be saying that you want to be part of a regional collaborative to look at these issues. It doesn't box you into a corner saying that, you know, you have to do one thing or another, but you're willing to be part of the conversation and acknowledge, you know, that there are certain things, again, where are we doing them, through floodplains and stormwater, to come up with larger solutions. It would provide some additional expertise to city staff by tapping those, those resources.
Yeah. Well, and what I like about the collaboration is that, that, you know, we could do something that's in the best interest of our citizens. And if our neighboring city does the opposite, you know, it could, it could totally defeat the good that we've done. So collaborating really makes sense.
Absolutely.
It's really important. One thing I wanted to comment on, in the, in the executive summary, it says there's no budget impact. And yet, as I read through this thing, there's all kinds of staff time and involvement that would need to be involved in this. So there is, while there may not be a direct-
Right.
-line item in the budget somewhere, there, there are resources that are going to enact this, which, as you said, we're sort of doing already on our own, but nonetheless. So I'm glad to hear that there are grant opportunities to help offset some of those costs.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Persis?
This is the east-central section that you're talking about, correct?
Yes.
Is there a Panhandle section or in a South Florida, like?
Yes, there are multiple regional planning councils for every section of the state. Think of like transportation, they have different districts. The regional planning councils are similar. They have different districts.
And I assume they all are going to be working together for the common goals?
I would assume that they're all talking to each other and trying to find out best practices. You know, I think the state government has declared that there can be a lot of resources and trying to do some best practices for resiliency. So I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Selby?
Steven, one other question. And, you know, this is really probably only answerable if you asked it of them, you know, when you're on the, on the call or in face-to-face meetings. But the, I noticed in the sea level rise chart that they show, they use the worst-case scenario for NOAA as the high one. And then they use the worst-case scenario for the, there were three, three metrics that they used. And I just, you know, I just, was there any discussion about that?
We, we didn't get into that level of detail. And I think as you drill down to your individual community, you may get a better range. And it's really based on estimates. So you may be able to do a low, high estimate and see what the different impacts might be.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Good deal. Anything else?
I have one comment. I have a slight fear that the connection to funding and grant opportunities from joining this is weaker than what it actually is being presented, at least in the memorandum of understanding and our involvement. I just have a fear that this is almost like a useless bureaucratic thing. I mean, to be quite honest, they're just going to have steering committees and we're going to have to stand for an annual conference, which people are going to talk, developers are going to talk, environmentalists are going to talk, bureaucrats are going to talk, and almost best practices that everyone already knows about is just going to be talked around the room. I mean, I have a slight fear. So, you know, I don't know if we want to join it or not. That's my fear. It's just talking head summit.
Right. I think that's a valid concern. I mean, Joyce or Steven, can either of you speak, speak to that?
I think you'll have opportunities to either learn or to get grant funding. And we've talked to both the Regional Planning Council and to DEO, who basically say that is one way to increase your, your funding opportunities. So there, in the staff's opinion, there's no negative of joining it. If it turns out to be just like you said, then you, you kind of, you know, you burn through some staff time, which we'll, we'll cover anyway, and, and, you know, you move on. But if you don't do it, then, then there's kind of the perception that you're not part of the collaborative and not in the, so at worst, it's exactly what you said and we learned our lesson and we move on.
And tonight, we're just given direction. Obviously, it'll all come back to us in the form of a resolution.
Yeah, if you're interested, that's what we need to know tonight. And if you're interested, let us know and then we'll bring something back to you in March.
Yes. Yes from Commissioner Selby. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Yes.
All right. So everybody's willing to move forward and that'll give us a little more time to look into it further as well.
And Steven, could you let us know all the other counties in Florida that are involved with it? And if they're, well, or let us know the ones that are not involved. I'm just curious to know.
Correct. We'll give you a list, absolutely.
Okay.
And we move to, thank you, Steven. We move to reports, suggestions, and requests. And tonight, we'll start with City Manager Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of updates on some projects we've been coming to a close. Breakaway trail storage and pumping improvements, you know, we got that grant from St. John's River Water Management District. A limited amount of water was pumped into the tank on Sunday to see if it would hold water, hopefully. And it did. And the contractor will be monitoring the level to ensure the tank's performance. And then they'll fill it up and then we'll have a ground breaking, I mean, a river cutting. So excited about that. The, the park across the street, Casson Park, the breakwater is nearly, nearly complete. The dock is complete. And this should be the last week of full construction. You'll see cleanup in the next week, 10 days. So hopefully, they'll be finishing that up shortly. We, as part of the capital budget, one of the important items for staff was our fiber optic connectivity, especially with regard to our emergency management. Fire Station 92 does not have a direct line to City Hall and that is being bid out now. And we hope to award that soon. And our timeline is completion by May for the start of the June hurricane season. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Joyce? Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. Thank you, Joyce.
No comments tonight. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to say, thank you.
All right. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Kent.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Just a couple of items this evening. First of all, to touch on Casson Park, the dock and the breakwater, and our incredible partner, Ike Leary with the bait shop across the street. Sir, thank you for your patience. Thank you for your partnership. Many in the community appreciate, you know, what we have over there and what you do as well. So I just want to publicly, again, say thank you tonight. Yeah. And, and there's light at the end of the tunnel. It's going to be back better than it ever was before. So good stuff there. To Dr. Lenz, before I talk about John Anderson, thanks for saving my mom. I, I mean it with that issue she had. Thank you very much. You know, special, special, special place in, in the Kent family heart. And I know you know, but your son and I played T-ball and baseball together and you helped coach out there at Nova Rec. So thank, thank you for that as a kid growing up here. I appreciate it more than you know. But John Anderson sidewalks, where were you five years ago? I know because Commissioner Stowers, who sat here, that gentleman walked the entire stretch and talked to every homeowner. And we batted this around. Mayor, was it a year or two years, something? It was, it was, it was a great, word exhaustive amount of time. And we had some options for our community. And it was, the one from the consultant was, let's straighten John Anderson. We're going to straighten John Anderson and we're going to put sidewalks in and we're going to put a bicycle lane in. And all of this stuff sounded great, except that we're going to tear down a lot of beautiful trees. And the community and the people that live there said, we actually want you to just fix the flooding, keep the road the exact same way it is. And that's what we did. We kept the original blueprint of that road and added three additional stop signs. And we're never going to make everybody happy because another doctor friend of mine who lives on John Anderson said, I'm so tired of these stop signs. You're driving me crazy when I have to stop, you know, and he's lived here his whole life as well. I just wanted to share that with you, Doctor. I don't think our, we, our rules don't allow, don't allow that at this time. So I, I, absolutely. I'm here, I'm here to chat with you afterwards. Would, would love to. But I didn't want the night to leave and this not be addressed to you because I have that much respect for you. So I wanted to just touch on that. So, I wanted to just touch on that. To our City Manager, let's get the gym at the South Ormond Neighborhood Center rocking and rolling, and we got the money, we approved the money, we got the grant. Commissioner Bohm, former Commissioner Bohm is out there in the audience, he's exactly right. This is fantastic stuff for the city of Ormond Beach, Zone 2, South Ormond Neighborhood Center. Joyce Shanahan, get it rocking and rolling, please. The last thing I want to talk about is, on Thursday afternoon, I had a lovely, and I don't use that term loosely, but I had a lovely meeting with several of the women from the garden club of the Halifax country. And Muffy Shanfro, thank you for reaching out to me and being that liaison. I think our meeting went longer than any of us expected, but I think some of us know about Manuka honey now. And, yeah, you know, I, I thought I'd get a smile out of you with that. I told you at the time, I didn't like the idea that you had, I loved the idea that you had, and that I love partnerships with the city, and to get that partnership as equal as we can, that I would come up here tonight, that I would mention this tonight, that I would talk to these fine men and women up here with me, and I would tell them that, from my meeting with you, I, I am on board, it is in my district, it is a pocket park. I told you about how I fought for pocket, pocket parks 15, 13 years ago. I went to Osceola Elementary, my mother and five siblings went to Osceola Elementary, the Pruitt's live next door to Vadner Park. Mr. and Ms. Pruitt are now buried in Hillside Cemetery, where my parents will be laid for their eternal rest. It's a special place, and I love what you're going, what your ideas are with that location. I'm going to tell you something else I love. I love the idea of putting native vegetative plants there that will produce the type of pollinators we want, the type of birds we want. You have the right flora, you have the right fauna, and you have a really fantastic place to even just meditate, to have an outdoor classroom. So, Commission, I, I met with, with these fine ladies, and I, I would like for, for us, if not tonight, because I told them that's usually not how this happens, we don't on the fly do that, because you all deserve the same thing that I received, and you may have already received it, I don't know, I'm first going tonight, but I'm sure that if they haven't, they're going to reach out to each of you, or city staff will set up some type of, of meeting, so that we can see where we go from here. I know that you would like a commitment from the city before you spend the money from the garden club of the Halifax country with a landscape architect that is so honed in on what needs to be planted at that exact site, in this location and that location for the amount of sun that each plant will receive throughout the day. I mean, it gets technical, but it's, it's important, serious stuff. So I want you to know I'm on board with that. And I'll just end the piece about Vadner Park with this, and not to get too many groans from the audience, but I'm so pleased that at this moment in time, we don't have a tree board, and I'll tell you why. Because you're talking about taking down a lot of trees that are in Vadner Park. There's going to be, there's go, well, you say, I see two, I see three, to some people, that's devastating. It's absolutely devastating that you're going to take down a tree in a park, but you're going to plant it, replant it with so many more trees that are actually indigenous to our area, and a tree board could possibly stop you from doing what you want to do there. So, it's possible, it, it certainly could happen, but I wanted you to know you have, you have my full support, it was a great meeting, and...
Can we stop and ask everybody what they think?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, we can do that. Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor is willing to yield a little bit of time. Muffy called me, I don't know, I assume she talked maybe to almost everybody or some people, but I certainly support that. I know they need time to plan and budget, we need time to plan and budget, but I love the partnership concept, and I love the native species versus the invasive species, and think it could be a win-win all the way around. But Commissioner Selby, did you?
Yeah, I, I had a meeting set up at the park and was not able to attend, it was the same day as my wife's surgery, and, but I, I love it also. I mean, I'm all in on this, I mean, I think this is fantastic. I'm not terribly knowledgeable about native plants, I mean, I understand the concept, so I'm looking forward to seeing native plants and native trees. I think this is a great education opportunity, people will be able to go see these things, oh, that's what a, you know, blah, blah, blah looks like, or these are the flowers that come off of that plant, or whatever, so I think, I think it's fantastic, I support it. So, I'm just, I'm glad you guys are taking the bull by the horns, and it's, it seems like a small amount of money. I also think that there are a lot of things that, that we can probably, and you all have already talked about this, get done on a pro bono or in-kind basis, either through our vendors or through staff, and through other companies in the area, so I, I think the actual budget impact will be pretty minimal.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, I, I just have to speak about this, I'm going to put my principal teacher's, principal slash teacher hat on, and just, first of all, I want to thank the ladies that I met, every single one of you the other day. They had a table set up, they had all the information you could ever want about the flowering plants and, and the trees and the birds and the insects and what was native, and I was just so excited when I saw all of that, because in my mind, I could see the outdoor classroom for the kids at Osceola, the kids at, at Ormond Beach Elementary, the kid, any kids that would want to come there and learn about the environment, because children, as we all know, they love this stuff, they, they just enjoy it, and they want to share that knowledge with others, so it's just the perfect place for this, for this park to, you know, be, and I think it's going to be like the first one maybe in Volusia County or Florida, if we can get it going, or even in the United States. We could be, again, the premier place, and I'm so excited about that, I, I just, I really am. I, I just was so impressed with, you know, your presentation, I just want to compliment all of you on the, on it, because you were ready, you were ready to answer questions, you had everything out there for someone that needed to know what was going to happen or what you would like to happen there, so I just want to thank you for that. I am totally in favor of it for not just children, but for adults, for the, for the neighborhood right there, people that live right in that area can walk there and just, just have the little peace. Maybe I can see photographers taking pictures there of the beautiful native plants, and it just reminds me of when I grew up here as a, as a native person, all those plants I saw, pictures of are plants I saw growing up right here in Ormond Beach. So, yes, I am so excited about it. Yes, yes, yes.
Tell us how you really feel. Commissioner Littleton?
Sure. When I met with them, and I kind of remembered how our speaking at the end goes, I was upset that, because I knew Commissioner Kent was speaking first tonight, and he was going to say something about it. So, you know, 50% of the stuff in that park is non-native. I mean, who would have known? I mean, you know, something's grown in there, and it's there, and whether or not it's native or not. I fully support the project, I've told Joyce, and I love it. As far as the budget goes, you know, we have a line item, I think we put it, put it off till next year, 50,000, give or take, for planting trees in the medium, medians of the roads, I think, and as we've learned, a lot of that, those are non-native palm trees and such, and I think if we just kind of say, okay, push that off to the side and invest at least part of that money into this, we're going to native Florida plants, and it's going to be a better use of that money that we already have in the capital budget.
Good deal. Joyce, do you have your direction?
So, just so you know, we'll bring back some sort of agreement or memorandum of understanding, and then work out an agreement. I know that they're on a tight timeline with their garden club annual year, so we'll probably bring it back to the first meeting in March.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, for yielding, we'll yield back the balance of your time.
Yep, I, I appreciate that, and just to kind of tie the, that final loop together with the garden club, Commissioner Selby said it, and when we met, I told you, when I was looking at the very rough numbers you had about, you know, removing invasive plants and trees, I stated then, you know, I thought that's something we could do in-house, so I love that you mentioned, you know, some of it could be in-house, and of course, I didn't even think about the donation piece, but, you know, that, that as well, so that, that's a good thing. The whole idea, and Commissioner Persis mentioned this, about being the first in the state with a park that is 100% native, going native with indigenous trees that, and, and plants that need to be here, I think, I think that's important. And, and I would be remiss if, if I didn't say, because the group said it today, and I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying, right now, if we, if we had a tree board, they very well could say no to those trees, and it would then come before us, we would have, I'm sure, a final say, if we even implemented such a thing, but they want to, they want to tell you no, but no, we wouldn't do that, that couldn't happen, I'm telling you, that could happen. So, I'm pleased that we don't even have, it's a moot point right now, because we don't have one, and this commission, it sounds like, all five of us are excited for your project, so that's good. But I want to be careful about one thing, and that's the numbers. So when I spoke with them, I was, I was pretty adamant about, you know, this is a partnership, so I don't want to throw out numbers like $50,000, I want to see, you know, what the real, actual, final numbers are, and then see about getting as close to 50/50 as we can on that. I think, you know, it's, it's important, you know, for our taxpayers, and I, and I told them at that meeting, I said, you know, I have a lot of people I answer to, and I like to have good answers to their questions, and, and they were all very supportive about that partnership. The last two things I have, the Ormond Beach Chamber Installation Banquet, what a wonderful event that was. And I mentioned, I think it was at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, that we had had the latest fishing tournament, but I was mistaken. The, the, the fishing tournament is actually coming up, is it, is it this Saturday?
15th.
Yeah.
No, it's two Saturdays.
Nope, two, two Saturdays, on the 15th, at Central Park. And, you know, that is a wholesome, wonderful, family activity that we do in the city of Ormond Beach, three times of year, three times a year, for you, and we do it for your children, 12 years and younger, it is free. They get to go to three different locations throughout the year, right across the street here, they fish the intercoastal, they go over to Commissioner Littleton and Mayor Partington's neck of the woods, and they fish over the, in Central Park, and the freshwater lakes over there, and then to be, to kick off summer, they're down on the beach, down at Neptune, you know, surf fishing, they're off the beach. And to see a kid catch a fish, sometimes for the very first time, and then win a trophy, and, and then at some of these tournaments, like, every participant gets a free fishing pole with lures. I mean, you talk about a wholesome, family, fun-filled day, together, not on social media, not on devices, but together, learning how to fish, hanging out with mom or dad, or grandma or grandpa, or aunt or uncle, and it's a catch and release, you know, throwing those fish back into the waterway. It, it really is a, a spectacular event, and then on top of it, I'm going to mention him twice tonight, you've got Ike Leary, who shows up at these events and cooks hot dogs for everybody there, you know, just out of his good heart, you know, to do that, and, and thank you for that. With that, Mayor, I'm done for the evening, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and we move to Zone 3, Commissioner Susan Persis.
Thank you, Mayor Partington, and good evening again. I just want to, first of all, we have so many more people in the audience than usual, and I just want to thank all of you all for coming, and those of you that spoke, you did a fabulous job, I just think your comments were appropriate and polite and positive, and it just, it's, it means a lot to hear people come up and, and talk about what they believe in, and I, and I just want you to know that I appreciate that very much. I want to thank Linda Williamson and Bill Denny, where are you guys, there you are, for, you know, just for all you're doing with your civil discourse, it's, it's a lot of work for you all, I know, and I, I regret I haven't been able to attend every single one, but when I can, I go, and I really enjoy it, so I just want to say thank you for doing that for our city. I am very also, very excited, just like Commissioner, former Commissioner Bohm is, about the Nova basketball court, that's going to come be, it will be an indoor court for these kids, so even if the weather's inclement, they can get inside and, and play basketball, so I'm just really thrilled about, about that, and, you know, it's a great benefit for Ormond Beach, plus, at the Racing and Recreation Committee also helped, the Ormond Memorial Art and Museum in Gardens, they are going to donate money to them as well, to help with their redesign of that facility, so that's exciting, and I know OBMS got, I guess, a whole stack of iPads, is that right, Deputy Mayor Kent? So, Ormond Beach did well getting some money, so that's, that's just, makes me feel really good. So, with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll touch on meeting Lucy Jackman from the Performing Arts Center, and friends of the Ormond Beach Performing Arts Center. What's going to happen there in the, in the lobby and the main hallway is going to be amazing, and the fundraising campaign they're going to have is really going to modernize that facility, increase revenues, and have a positive impact on the patron experience. I also want to say thank you to Robert and Mark over at the PAC, Lucy said you guys really help her out there, and that's wonderful, and just a typical day in Ormond Beach staff, you know, helping out the community. I think that's it, I touched on everything else, or has been touched on, so with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton. Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it occurred to me with the public comments that we had tonight, that there's really a, a theme that's very exciting, and that is, I call it sort of quality of life and then focus on the environment. And everybody who spoke tonight has passion for this place where we live, and they, they love this place, and they want to make it better, and that makes, while at times, that makes it a little challenging, you know, for us, but it's also what really makes it rewarding, is that we did have a nice turnout tonight, and people care about what they're talking about, and I just kind of wanted to comment on those. One thing, you know, we start off with the South Ormond Neighborhood Center and the Racing and Recreation, we're going to get $235,000 from the Racing and Recreation Board, which is the landlord to the Speedway on the county-owned property, but they make most of that money not from Speedway rent, but from the car shows that they do, the Thanksgiving Car Show, and then the Spring Car Show, those, and so, you know, and thank goodness that Commissioner Persis's husband, Carl, is chairman of that board, because we would, Carl told me privately that, that they were going to fund, they, the money ran out at eight projects, and our South Ormond, and they do this all, they, they rank, they rank all the projects, there are about 20, there was twice the, there were requests that doubled the amount of money that they had available, and he had an, he had a feeling that our, that the South Ormond Rec, the gymnasium request, was number nine, that it was just below the line, and so he proposed, well, what if we gave like, what would it take, what percentage would it take in order to fund nine projects, you know, to go one more, and that was 85%. And so, instead of the top eight getting 100%, all nine projects got 85% of what they requested, which funded our second, or, I guess is our third project, because of Ormond Middle, but that's a school board. Anyway, that's just a little aside, and the fact that former Mayor Carl Persis, you know, is chairman of that board, and he had this gut feeling that that ninth project was ours, made that all come about, so, you know, kudos to Carl, usually he shows up about this time, so I would, please, please share that with him.
Thank you, thank you.
And Ike, and Dr. Lentz being here with an old man project, they were the other, one of the other projects that was funded, so, you know, quality of life and the visual arts, the resiliency collaborative, I, you know, I, I'm excited about that, I think the mayor is correct, that this is a major emphasis for the state of Florida and for the governor, and I think because of that, it's going to be a priority, and I think funding will be available, so to be a part of the, to be at the table, as Commissioner Kent frequently says, if you're, let's see, how's that go, if you're, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? Yeah, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. We don't want to be on the menu, we want to be at the table. And then the tree board, I'm intrigued by that idea. Ms. Meadows, Georgia Ann Meadows, who spoke tonight, reached out to me, we spent some time together, I, I want to say I introduced, I referred her to City Manager Shanahan, they met, I'm intrigued by this idea, and I think they, I, I think, you know... know, um, I, I'll just leave it at that, because I think the, um, we have a very comprehensive tree ordinance now, and we have very strict development regulations, um, but maybe there's room for improvement, you know, so, so I like the fact that, I love your demeanor, your all's demeanor, it's wonderful to be respectful and bring suggestions, um, we don't know everything, you know, there's no way we can know everything, so we're not experts in all areas. So, uh, this, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to hearing more talk about that. And finally, the Vadner Park, um, uh, the whole program, I've already said most of the things I wanted to say, but I'm just really excited about, you know, you ladies bringing that forward. It's a great idea, um, and, you know, maybe it can influence some things we do in other parts of the city also, but let's get this first one going, and, and, uh, use it as an education tool, not just for, I mean, in addition to students, but also for, for adults, residents. So, and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby, and I had on my list, as well, a shout-out to Chairman Persis on the Recreation Racing Board, 'cause he basically saved, saved the project for us, and, uh, listening to staff's rendition of how the meeting went, uh, it was a little dicey there for a while, but right at the end, uh, they pulled it out, and wanna thank not only Chairman Persis, but, uh, George Burden, who seconded the motion, uh, as well, and then it passed unanimously, so that was fantastic, and, uh, great work by staff, getting that together so quickly. But, uh, I kinda wish, I've been to those meetings before, I kinda wish I had been there just to watch, sounded like a little bit of theatrics, but watch how that went. And the, the point is, the Racing Rec members don't know what the projects are, um, that have survived the vote, so nobody really knew, but, uh, it ended up working out well for us, so I think that's a great thing. Uh, the next item I had was, uh, one that we all need to weigh in on. Uh, Commissioner Bohm, Ambassador Bohm now, uh, had talked to me about the naming of the Field Number Five for Dwight Durant, who has done a huge amount of work for our recreational programs, and just needed to find out if there's support to direct the city manager to move forward with that. Um, I can go through the list, or ask Commissioner Bohm to come up and go through the list of reasons why, um, but essentially Dwight has really given quite a bit of his time freely on many different projects, including and up to the, uh, South Orman Neighborhood Center Gym, to get the city where it is today from a recreational standpoint, so Commissioner Littleton, are you?
Yes, I just have a question. Did it go before the Leisure Services Board? I saw an email a week ago, or something like that?
My understanding is it has been.
Okay, and they approved it, I assume?
They did approve it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the issue is, uh, time-wise, between now and opening day, staff needs to know that they have direction from the commission to move forward with that, in order to make it, uh, make it happen at the appropriate, appropriate time, so...
Dwight Durant has done a yeoman's job over the years, uh, for sports and recreation, so yeah, I'm totally in on that.
Commissioner Persis is on board. Deputy Mayor Kent?
Good morning, Dwight Brandham.
So, thank you. That's five to oh, Joyce, if you can bring that back to us, or handle it appropriately. Um, and thank you, Commission, for that. Uh, I wanted to mention the ethics training that the Volusia League of Cities is providing is gonna happen on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. They have, uh, I think fourteen spots open for that. They can fit eighty, they've had sixty-six sign up, and so the time is drawing near. Um, I wanna say it's from like eight to one, something like that. Um, I wanna say, did you already sign up for that? Commissioner Persis signed up. Uh, you don't?
I signed up.
Okay, and there's other opportunities throughout the year, obviously, and you can also watch on YouTube, there are hours-long videos of ethics training, and there's, uh, St. John's County, Florida, has an, okay, has an impressive website with, uh, audio versions of the ethics training that you can listen to as well, so you can structure that in on your, on your own time. Um, and then just, I guess last Thursday, I was at the Orman Beach Downtown Rotary, and we're just talking about committed community partners, much like the Garden Club, uh, people who care about the city and work in a positive way to get things done. They don't, uh, attack, they don't call other organizations trying to get things revoked that the city has achieved. It's impressive to see the range of people who love to live here and work in a positive way with the city, and along those lines, the Downtown Rotary Group, uh, has been working with Orman Beach Elementary, doing some amazing, amazing things, and Commissioner Persis was at that Rotary meeting as well, but, um, they received a check from Advent Health for forty-five thousand dollars to provide exercise equipment on the four corners of the bridge, partnering with the city, and so that's gonna be an amazing opportunity for an area that's already heavily used for exercise and working out, and now it's gonna have, uh, some additional opportunities and exercise equipment there going in, so I'm excited about that, and excited about the positive things that Advent is doing, and the, the Orman Beach Rotary Club is doing. Uh, Friday afternoon, I had the opportunity to go to Signature Healthcare and Rehab, and they had a wheelchair Super Bowl. It was their second or third one, and those residents were so excited, having a great time, uh, obviously limited mobility, but it did not affect their spirit one bit, and so that was amazing to see in our city, uh, that going on, and they do a great job there of, of all the events that happen throughout the year, making sure that their residents get to participate in those, so it was an honor, honor to attend that. Later that night was the Chamber Installation, I think it was Deputy Mayor Kent mentioned what a great event that was, and talk about committed, uh, community partners, there were so many there that evening, and they do so much, I mean, the Teacher of the Quarter alone is a, a yeoman's effort to honor the teachers who work in this community, and that's just one of the many things that the, the Chamber does. Then Saturday, uh, we had the Granada Grand Arts Festival behind City Hall, um, and then Orman Garage had the unveiling of Orman Beach's first mural that was done by Thais Franca, who was the artist, and this is one of the prints that's available, uh, from that, you can get it at Thais's Art Gallery at one-fifty-four West Granada Boulevard. It's really a beautiful first mural for our city, and we're so excited about our mural program. This particular mural represents a big part of our early history in Orman Beach with, with racing on the beach, and it was, uh, gosh, so well-attended. The weather was rainy, drizzly, overcast, cold, but still there were hundreds of people that came out for it, and, uh, great excitement, great spirit, and people so happy to see such a, a dedication to history. Bill Jones was there, who spoke about his love for Orman Beach's history, his desire to, uh, continue to improve our historical footprint, and so it was just a, a great day for the city. As far as Granada Grand, uh, the Arts District, it's a real thing, and it's happened in Orman Beach because of, again, committed community partners, people who care about art, working in a positive way to make something happen in Orman Beach, that has become a, a very positive draw for our downtown. There's a lot more art and opportunity than there ever was before, and that grew out of Main Street, Orman Main Street, so another great thing that Julia Truilo has done, her knowledge in that area, and Judith Stein's knowledge in the art world have really enhanced that, and so it's been, been fantastic, and I didn't wanna let that go by without, without mentioning that. And then Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to Central Park One off of Fleming, Commissioner Littleton's neck of the woods, where the, um, Fishing Tournament's gonna be on the fifteenth, and there's also a really beautiful community garden there, but I talked to the Trail Life USA group, which, between children and parents, was a group of about thirty people. Some of them had just moved to the community, uh, and they were really raving about how beautiful Orman Beach is, how much they love living here. A couple had come with their five children from Cape Coral, which is in southwest Florida, and that, that's a beautiful area, too, but they were just really impressed with how clean the city was, how, uh, focused they were on programming for children, leisure services, and recreation, and so it was wonderful to, to be out there, talk to those kids about how government, uh, should work, and the whole time we were there, you could hardly find a parking space anywhere in that park, and there were people walking, biking, running, playing sports, and it was just a great thing to see on a Sunday afternoon, so a lot of positive things going on, and, uh, that's just a, a little snapshot of my regular week. I don't always post every single thing I do, 'cause you'd be bored to death, you're probably bored to death after listening to this tonight, but, um, there's a lot of great things that are going on in the city, and it's because of a commission that's involved and listens. I didn't even talk about Mondays with the mayor, but that's happening, uh, frequently, and you can check the city's website to find out when those are, 'cause those have been very positive and great opportunities to engage with all types of different residents on a variety of, of different issues. And so with that, we will say goodnight. Thank you all for being here.